Good evening and welcome to the Bloomington League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. My name is Martha Allen and I'm a volunteer forum moderator from the Minneapolis League of Women Voters. It is my pleasure to be here tonight with you. Tonight's forum will consist of me asking predetermined questions to the candidates. The candidates have not seen these questions before tonight. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question, and answers will be timed. I have already warned them. Our volunteers were hold-up warnings when there are 30 seconds left and again when there are 15 seconds left. We appreciate each candidate's respecting our timing constraints. Seriously, we've got a lot of questions and not a lot of time, and we want everybody to have the same shot at answers. Because of the tight schedule, we will not be asking for questions from the audience. If you have a question that is not covered, feel free to write it down with your contact information and we can pass it on to the candidates, or this is a democracy, you can hand them to the candidates yourself out in the hall. For each question, we will start with a different candidate selected randomly. We will switch order for each question. One question, the candidates will answer left to right. The following question, the order will be reversed. Unless there are any questions, we will begin. Timekeepers, are you ready? We will start off with a one-minute introduction. Candidates, please introduce yourselves and include which seat you're running for, and we'll begin here on my left with candidate Lyle Abone.
Okay, thank you. My name is Lyle Abone and I'm running for the Bloomington School Board. I am an incumbent running for reelection. First of all, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this public service they're doing for us and for the community. I'd like to take the bulk of my time to give you my background and my qualifications for the school board. My career has been basically 46 years in education at all levels. I have been a math teacher, I have been an administrator, I am currently a field specialist at Saint Mary's University. My wife and I are the parents of three children who have graduated from Kennedy High School. I have eight grandchildren, one who is starting all-day kindergarten at Olson. I have served central Bloomington in the Minnesota House of Representatives, and I appreciate your support and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Continue.
Good evening. My name is Tom Bennett and I'm running for the Bloomington School Board. I am a special ed teacher and a member of the Parent Advisory Council for ECFE here in Bloomington and in Richfield. The last few years, I've been fortunate enough to be a stay-at-home father and raise my children, and they're getting older and they're getting into schools. My oldest, Nikita, who goes by Kida, she just started kindergarten at Wasburn, and my youngest, Soren, who goes by Pablo, is doing preschool at Pond and will be an all-day kindergarten next year. So I feel that this is a good opportunity for me to try to run for the board because I'm going to be in a transition from going from my kids going to school so I'll have time during the day so I can be visible in the schools and participate and do all the board member things. And one of the reasons I'm running is because I think it's important that parents with young children have a voice in the future and direction of our schools. Thank you, and I look forward to the questions that we're going to have tonight.
Arlene.
Hi, I'm Arlene Bush, and sorry to be repeating everything again and again, but I've been on the school board 32 years. Always say time flies when you're having fun, but I had six daughters go through the schools and two granddaughters and have lots of grandchildren, some in town, some out of state, but I just think it's so important, and I never say, "This is the way we've always done it," so I'm always looking for everything we can do to improve our education. And love working with everybody in the community and getting to the schools often, so it's been a wonderful thing.
You need to stop, Arlene.
Thank you.
Tim Culver.
Thank you. I'm Tim Culver. I'm the chairman of the Bloomington School Board. I'm running for reelection. I first ran for the school board when I had children in the school as well. I have three graduates of the Bloomington schools, have lived in Bloomington for approximately 30 years. I consider one of my primary occupations to be community volunteer since I've been involved in Bloomington Community Foundation, Bloomington Theater, but I work professionally also in nonprofit management and I'm a licensed teacher. So I appreciate having the opportunity to participate in the decision-making of the board, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring what is always an excellent opportunity to meet the community by this forum and by the telecast that will follow.
Rick.
Hi, my name is Rick Oliva, and I'm running also for the Bloomington School Board. I was born and raised here in Bloomington. I went to Bloomington Public Schools my whole life, graduated from Kennedy in '94. After that, I went on to college in Boston, got a degree in music and a master's degree in music education, and I was actually teaching private lessons, and I taught at the West Bank School of Music and I also taught at McNally Smith College of Music for five years. In the community, I've participated on the PBIS Committee at Ridgeview Elementary. I've also been on the District Curriculum Advisory Committee going on my second year, and I've participated in some of the music steering committees. I'm running because I really want to serve the community. I think it's important that parents of students in the schools have a voice on the board, and I believe in the value of education, so I appreciate your vote in November. Thank you.
Jim Sorum.
Good evening. I'm Jim Sorum. My wife, Diana, and I have lived in Bloomington for 32 years with our three children who graduated from Kennedy. Many of you may remember, I served on the board for 21 years and retired two years ago. Officially retired, but it didn't stop me from visiting and volunteering in the schools because I have three grandchildren in them now. I'm running for the board because I want to rejoin the team that produced state and national award-winning schools, a team that appreciates our citizen taxpayers by planning and managing stable financial conditions. I'm the only candidate in the election who has a business finance background, which has been helpful in making budget and policy decisions for the school board. I've held top leadership positions in organizations and business groups, served on boards of directors for nonprofit, religious, and government agencies. My main platform has been and still is doing what is best for kids. As Bloomington becomes diverse, we need to provide as many opportunities for them to learn and grow to their fullest ability.
Dawn Steigoff.
Yes, good evening. I'm Dawn Steigoff. I have three children who attended Bloomington Public Schools and have lived here in Bloomington for 30 years. I've been an advocate for children my entire life. I've worked to improve education across the state of Minnesota. I've been involved in testifying at hearings, working on legislation. I serve on the Minnesota Autism Task Force, and I also served on the Legislative Special Education Task Force. In the local school district, I started volunteering as a room parent. I've been on the Special Education Advisory since 1997. I served on the Curriculum Advisory. I've also served on the Human Rights Commission here in Bloomington, and I am a substitute paraprofessional for the school district and have worked in nearly every building. With your support, I would like to continue my passion for public education. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Now we'll start with the first question, and Tim Culver will be the first answerer, and then we'll go his left around that way, all right? Here's the question. What is your motivation to run for the school board? Some of you have already said that already, but here's the other part of it. Can you name something you specifically want to change or have an impact on? Tim?
Being the first one to speak is kind of a challenge here. What I would like to do is to refer anyone who is listening in the room and who is watching to the Sun Current, which will have candidate profiles shortly, I believe in another week or two, because the question you asked is also addressed in the Sun Current. Reason I'm running is, as the leader of the school board in the current year, I believe that we have some initiatives that we need to follow through on, including evaluating the effectiveness of what we're asking the community to present us with, with resources and technology, and with resources for safety and security in the buildings. I think an experienced school board that takes a hard look at how well it's improving conditions in our schools is extremely important, and I want to follow through with that. And I will end there. I think we'll have opportunity to speak to other issues, but I do want to frame this conversation night by saying, "I like the Bloomington schools. It's a great system," and nothing I say is meant to be critical.
Stop, 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 stop. Rick?
My motivation, I want to serve the community. I believe in the value of public education. I understand how important it is. Are there specific things that I'd like to change? You know, reading through the policies, sure, there's some things in the policies that I see that I think are a little bit, you know, could be questionable, but for the most part, I think we have a pretty good system here. I want to continue creating an environment where all of the students can reach their fullest potential, and so that's my main motivation. Also, if you see me getting confused, it's because she keeps raising these green signs up here. I get sidetracked very easily. But anyways, yeah, so what I'm hoping to do is, yeah, continue creating an environment where all students can reach their fullest potential and remain fiscally responsible and fiscally solvent in our community.
Tim, do you want the question again?
I think so. My reason for running is, many people have come up to me and said, "Why don't you run for school board?" And I said, "Well, I already retired once." And so as I was talking to my family, my daughter says, "Who do you think you are, Brett Favre?" And I said, "Well, yeah, now that you mention it, I miss it. I was good at it, and I think I can help the team." As I've mentioned before, I've been on a variety of advisory committees, and I think serving on all of those advisory committees over the years has given me a sense that we need to work more with our diverse population that's coming out. We're going to have about, in 10 more years, we'll have 50 percent diversity in our schools, not so much in the community, but in our schools. The Bloomington schools are already addressing this fact with some of the programs that they have, but more is needed, and we need to reach the families and engage the families in their children's learning, and we hope we can do that through some of the programs that are in place right now.
Thank you. Dawn, do you want the question read?
Sure.
What is your motivation to run for the school board, and can you name something you specifically want to change or have an impact on?
My motivation is because I am just such a strong believer in public schools. I've already spent hours and hours volunteering in the Bloomington Public Schools. I think we have great schools. I think we have great staff. I just want to continue that. My other motivation is that I just strongly believe in public service. I want to serve my community. I want to be involved in my community. I have been involved in my community. The other thing that I would like to work on is, I think we are starting to see a growing achievement gap in our district, and I think that's something that we have to start seriously addressing. We have, almost 20 percent of our students are not graduating in four years, and I think that's another thing that, along with achievement gap, that we have to start looking at and seeing what needs to be addressed there. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyle?
Okay, thank you. My whole life has been education, and this is one way that I can basically give back to the community. I enjoy serving on the Bloomington School Board. I think I have something to offer to the board discussions, and therefore I am giving back to the community. My priorities might be threefold. I want to make sure that our buildings are safe. I want to work to diversify our staff, to reflect the demographics of our community, and I want to make sure that our early childhood learners are ready for kindergarten. Thank you.
Tom?
I would say my motivation is that I've seen myself as an advocate for children. I've spent my career advocating for children and families. I think there's nothing really I want to radically change. I think there's always room for improvement, and one area that I think we need to improve on is our ECFE programs. We have great programs here. We have some of the best in the state. The Secretary of Education could have gone anywhere in the country, and he came to Bloomington because our programs are phenomenal. But I think the problem that I've seen, that I've noticed out door knocking, is when I'm talking to parents that have young children, and I always ask them if they're involved in, if they have ECFE programs, and I would say the majority of them, eight out of 10, have no clue what I'm talking about. So I'm having to do a lot of education at the door, explaining what ECFE is, why it's important, and giving them the web address at earlyed.info and telling them that a lot of these classes are really affordable, if not free, and that it helps get all kids ready to learn when they get to kindergarten. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlene?
Thank you. I keep saying the same thing for so many years, but I certainly am not coming out for a particular change, but I'm always open to change whatever will improve education. And I was very involved for years as a parent. Had five daughters graduate from Lincoln, and the youngest one started, and a year later we closed their high school. So I learned early on how to make tough, tough decisions, but I just, it's so important to me, and with all my state and national experience and so forth, if there's anything more I can do to improve our district.
Sorry.
Which is great being in the same as community.
Second question, we'll start with Dawn Steigoff. Thank you. I'm having like a mental breakdown here. Okay, second question, and we start with Dawn and then we go Jim and around this way, okay? Do you believe our schools are doing enough to make our students globally competitive? Why or why not? Globally competitive, why or why not?
I think that for some students, we are, but not for everyone. We do have our programs for high-achievement students that probably are able to compete globally, but when you look at test scores and they say, "Oh, we're the best in the nation," or "We're the top five in the nation," when you compare our test scores to other countries, we're not. The state of Minnesota is not in the top anymore, and we have started to, I guess you could say, slide or lose ground in how well we are educating our students. So I do think that that's something that we have to be very serious about and make sure that we are competing and our test scores are in the top. It's not enough to be just the top in the U.S. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Could you repeat the question again?
Sure.
Sorry.
Do you believe our schools are doing enough to make our students globally competitive? Why or why not?
All right, thank you. I think we are doing as much as we possibly can with the funding that we have. That's always seems to be the question, do we have enough funds? And actually, if we had adequate and appropriate funding from the state and the federal, we could do a lot more. This levy referendum that we're hoping will pass is going to provide technology resources, and by that, it's the various advancements with Chromebooks, whiteboards, and all kinds of teaching techniques that are going to help the students learn. We've used interactive TV in the past for a variety of foreign language courses, and we hope to do more of that, teaching foreign language. But I think we have enough schools within schools to work with the kids who need the work, as well as allowing them to advance with our secondary options that we have. We are doing an awful lot to stay competitive.
Thank you. Rick?
Well, our schools are becoming more diverse, and one of the things that that does is that allows our students to interact with a wider variety of people. When I was in school, I don't think there was any Somalians in Bloomington, and now there's a large community. So that's a segment of the population that now our students get to interact with where they didn't have that opportunity before. That's not something necessarily that we're doing, but we're attracting these people because we must be doing something right. Also, another example would be with the technology in this referendum that we're trying to pass now. With that technology, that is the wave of the future. If you aren't technologically literate, you will be behind. So that's another thing that we're doing. Also with RTI, which is Response to Intervention, we try to catch the kids before they fall too far behind, because the studies show, once you start out behind, it's really hard to catch up. So we start, we try to catch them before they fall behind, pick them up. Students that need extra enrichment, we try to bring them up higher, and we also cater to the middle, and I think my time's up.
Thank you. Tim?
Martha, your question has very broad implications, because we are speaking about the ability to relate to people from other cultures, but we're also speaking then about the quality of education that's being received, and also the scope in terms of student awareness of what options exist in our wide world. We have passed up an opportunity in Bloomington for an international baccalaureate program that may have made elementary students more aware of the diversity in the world and how they might learn better to deal with people who are not like them. We also have, with our technology initiative, the opportunity now to move forward with handheld devices and 24-hour access to the internet. So I think in that way, we become more competitive with other districts and with the world. But in addition, there are things that we maybe should focus on if we truly want to say that's a high priority, in terms of examining economic systems and systems of production and labor, and how those vary, and how our students can know more about how the economies work.
Stop. Arlene, do you want the question again, or?
No, thank you. Well, everything is important, but with the lack of unlimited funding, we have to choose what our priorities are, and I think we have really concentrated on many things, but especially preschool education and things, which so many children need, and with our changing membership in the Bloomington schools and so forth, it's so important to work for everybody. And I think we've been really doing a good job. I'm always saying I'm thankful to be on the Bloomington Board, because we have such wonderful educators and everybody working together and supportive community and everything, so I think they're all important.
Please stop.
I think the schools here in Bloomington are phenomenal, which is why I chose to move here and why I choose to put my kids in the schools here. I think, as Tim was saying earlier, that we missed an opportunity a few years back when we, the discussion was around STEM schools and an international baccalaureate school. And I personally know several parents who live here in Bloomington but send their kids to the STEM school in Richfield, and what we're doing is we're losing our students to our surrounding schools. And I would, if we could have the discussion of magnet schools and include a STEM school and an international baccalaureate school, I think that it'll give parents and students more choices and options, and give them more of a worldview and prepare them for, you know, once they graduate. Thank you.
Lyle?
Okay, our district does a great job, in my opinion, of meeting the needs of the students both locally and globally, but of course, I think we can do more and we can do better. The diversity of our student body here in Bloomington encompasses race, yes, but I think it also encompasses the special needs learner, the English language learner, the early childhood learner, the high-achieving learner, and on and on the list goes. I think we must make sure that our staff has the proper training and the proper equipment to differentiate instruction and to challenge all students. Yes, all students can learn, and it is up to us as a school board to assure that the equipment is there and the training is there, that we can meet the demands of our student body. Thank you.
Question three. This time, we start with Jim Sorum and move to Dawn and then around this way, okay? This has already come up, but I'm sure you've been asked this many times already, but as it is such a big part of this year's election, we want to hear from you on this topic. Please share your opinion of the safety and technology referendum on the ballot this year. Please be as specific as you can in your one-minute response.
To start off, I'm going to use another football analogy. If you want to win, you have to have a great offense, but if you want to win the championship, you have to have a great defense. So the technology aspect of it is going to provide our students with an offense where they can learn as much as they possibly can. With Chromebooks and with whiteboards and with teaching staff development, they have that opportunity. The great defense is going to be the safety in our schools. When we're having, the buildings remodeled to include just a one area that they have to come in, and then this is going to provide some software and some additional measures that are going to be able to track who goes in and who goes out, as well as various other safety requirements that this task force that we've had has found out for us. So like I said, we need a good offense and a good defense in order to become a championship district.
Dawn Steigoff?
Yes, I support the referendum. On the safety, I would just like to say that, for me, the fact that they're going to be able to have people swipe the card to gain access is just such a huge thing. I just recently had a case where I was coming out of a building and someone grabbed the door on the way in, and I didn't know the person, and so I said, "Excuse me, but who are you, because I'm not sure I'm supposed to let you in here?" And it turned out it was staff, of course, that I was questioning. But I just think that that's a big thing for the safety, the technology. We absolutely cannot compete globally if our children do not have access to the technology that everyone else has. We have to, not only access for learning, but knowing how to use it. So we, and the fact that they can have learning anytime, anywhere is part of the goal of it. I think why wouldn't we want to do that? Why wouldn't we offer that? Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Lyle?
Thank you. Yes, I too support the referendum. Safety is overdue. Our buildings are vintage to some degree when it comes to safety, and we must address that. The reality of safe schools today is with us, and that costs money. As for the technology part of it, I believe that technology will enhance learning for students, which is our first purpose in life. We must use that technology to give our staff the strategies to basically meet the demands of the students. The district must ensure that all students are tech-savvy. I also believe in anytime, anywhere, anybody is a great motto that the district should work with, and I support the referendum. Thank you.
Tom?
Yes, I support the referendum. I think the security aspect really does a good job at keeping our schools safe from external threats, and I think the technology, what I like a lot about the technology with the anytime-anywhere learning, is that they're going to be setting up some Wi-Fi's in community places like large apartment complexes and in libraries where kids that might not have Wi-Fi at home would be able to go to the library and access their assignments, which I think is a really good thing. I think that if this referendum passes, that it needs to be the first step in making our schools safer. I think the second step needs to be looking at how are we going to protect our kids from internal threats, and we need to look at how mental illness impacts our schools, and we need to look to see if we have the appropriate amount of school psychologists and social workers and trained staff that are working with children and that can deal with our mental health issues.
Thank you. Arlene?
Thank you. Yes, I certainly support the referendum. I wish we didn't have to go asking our citizens for more money, but it's so necessary, and the safety is especially important, which I'm sorry that we have gotten to that stage, but it's very important to make sure, with some of the horrible things that have happened in schools, that our students are safe. And the technology is so important for all our students, and we've just got a wonderful department and wonderful teachers involved, and so the money is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Yes, of course, I support the referendum. There's unanimous support on the school board, and I strongly support it. I think what's important to keep in mind, however, is that the passage of a referendum in November is not the end goal of what we're all about. And as Tom suggested, what goes on in the buildings is extremely important. What we do in classrooms is about relationships. Public education is about building relationships, adult and children, children and children, and so the relationships in the building, when we have secured the buildings, are what's extremely important that we look after, and that we find ways of providing options and identifying problems. that we find ways of providing options and identifying problems. When it comes to classroom technology, it's also about the relationships. Technology will free up more time in the classrooms, that teachers can better identify student needs and provide a variety of options to encourage better learning. So it's not all about buying equipment and paying for more technology, it's about improving learning opportunities. The school board needs to oversee that carefully.
Stop. Rick?
Sure. I work in technology, and I can tell you that no matter how you look at the unemployment numbers, they're bad. And at where I work, they'll post for jobs, offering six-figure salaries, and they have a hard time filling those jobs. So technology, if we, if part of our goal in education is preparing our students for life after school, technology is a pretty good place to start with that. When I first, when I got my job a year ago, I was looking at some of the statistics, and in New York City at the time, in technology industry, it was, unemployment was a negative number. They have more jobs than they have people. Going on to the safety and security aspect of the referendum, sometimes I hear people say, "Well, a locked door isn't going to stop someone from getting in," if they're really determined. "Well, you know what? Your locked door in your car isn't going to stop someone from stealing your car." And you aren't trying to say that your car is more important than the kids in our schools. We have to do what we can to protect our kids.
Thank you. Question four. And believe it or not, the way this rotation works, we start with Rick.
Right.
Then we go to Tim, and we come around this way. What is your understanding of and opinion on the issue commonly referred to as, quote, "The achievement gap"?
There's a lot of different ways to slice it. A lot of times, people like to look at achievement gap in terms of race. I don't like to do it that way. I like to look at it in terms of kids who are achieving versus kids who are not achieving, regardless of their race, regardless of their ethnic background, regardless of their socioeconomic status. What we need to do is figure out what reasons are people struggling. And I can tell you what, I have my aunt and uncle here from Cuba. In Cuba, the literacy rate is right around 100%. I guarantee you, they are all poor, and most of them are what we would call diverse population. So being poor and being diverse isn't the cause of the problem. However, for, we need to figure out what is actually causing achievement gap if there is disproportionate racial disparities in that sense. The other achievement gap that I like to look at is in terms of the students who graduate versus the ones who don't. As Dawn had mentioned earlier, our graduation rate is right around 80%, which is good compared to the rest of the country, but I still think 20% of the students not graduating is unacceptable.
Tim Culver?
I don't like the phrase "achievement gap." I've always opposed the school district using it, but I've lost that conversation and that debate. Achievement gap arises out of "No Child Left Behind." "No Child Left Behind" was about rating schools and rating students' achievement. And the way we've chosen to do that is, surprise, the same way my achievement was measured, when I was growing up, it was about multiple choice testing and rating people along some kind of continuum based on multiple. We know so much more about how children learn. We know so much more about how to create these relationships. And as Rick just suggested, it's not about race. It's not about standardized testing. It's about building capacity of students. And I strongly hope that with our new approach to the use of technology and instruction in the classroom, that we start looking at other ways of evaluating what we want our students to become and use those as true measures rather than an achievement gap.
Thank you. Arlene?
Yes, I agree. It's too bad because there'll all be, always be a difference between the students and what they can achieve and learn. But it's giving them the opportunity and the education and the help that is needed for each one. Even having had six children, six daughters go through the school, their achievement was different, but a lot of it had to do with how they could learn and so forth, what they needed. So, and that was a very small difference. But it's, it is a continuing big problem. And the language now with the number of students that don't speak English and how we have to educate them and help them. So it grows.
Thank you, Arlene. Tom?
As an educator, I've seen, I've had a lot of experience with the achievement gap. And when I was a teacher in Albuquerque, I taught in the, a Title I homeless program where we had kids that were either homeless, living in shelters, living in cars, or that type of various aspect. And to expect that those kids can perform on a test or pay attention in class as well as another kid coming from a, you know, a secure nurturing home, I think is impossible. I mean, you have a kid that's thinking about, you know, starving, not knowing where to get the next meal from. And so I think the way we deal with the achievement gap is we give all of our children the equal opportunity to be successful. And if a child needs a hot meal to be successful, then we give them a hot meal. If they need a shirt, then we give them a shirt. We do whatever we can to make sure that our, all of our kids are learning and they can meet their potential.
Thank you. Lyle?
Okay, yes, I would agree that the achievement gap is a serious problem here in Bloomington. It's not an urban problem, it's a suburban problem also. Recent statistics that came out from the Department of Education show that one of our buildings in Bloomington scored around 21 on the MMR, which is a statewide test, and our highest building in Bloomington scored at 90. So one was 21, one was 90. That is a gap. My question would be, have we changed our teaching strategy? Another question would be, have we changed our funding mechanisms to address this gap? I would, as a board member, constantly be on top of those two questions and ask the administration to address those. Thank you.
To me, achievement gap is any child who is not keeping up with their peers or is lagging behind. It could be for a variety of reasons. It could be because they're an English language learner and they've, you know, only lived here for six months. It could be because, as Tom mentioned, they live in their car. It could be because they're special education students. It doesn't really matter. It just, what matters is that they are behind and they need help. One of the things that helps with the achievement gap is if we can get access to more children into our early childhood programs. If a child comes to kindergarten over a year behind their peers, how do they ever catch up? You know, how much help can a teacher give them if they're already behind when they start? The other thing is we need staff development so that the teachers can learn to do RTI, which is intervention for students that are behind, and so that they can learn the different steps to RTI. Thank you.
Frankly, I think it's unfortunate that the achievement gap has been politicized in, in education with sides being taken as to how to, how to do with what. The state has come up, there are the very helpful data collection, but it classifies all students in eight categories. And in each of those eight categories, naturally, there is some race, there's some poverty, there's all kinds of factors that go into it. The sad thing is if we think about a class of 32 with these eight categories, we could possibly have four students in each of those categories. How is a teacher and a parent going to deal with that? We have to realize the achievement gap has been with us ever since we've been in school. In fact, the achievement gap is real noticeable with the Minnesota Twins and the Minnesota Vikings. Now, there's an achievement gap. So while we try and deal with this, and a serious issue, it's been with us, and Bloomington has recognized it, and every teacher tries to deal with the achievement gap and with every student.
Stop.
Okay.
You guys have been so good about answering the questions very quickly and concisely that we have time for a fifth question. So, we're going to start with Arlene and then move to Tim and go that way around. Okay? Do you believe Bloomington schools are on the right track right now? Why or why not? And what will you support or change? Do you believe Bloomington schools are on the right track? Why or why not? And what will you do to support change?
Yes, I think Bloomington schools are great. The needs are always growing, but we just have a good district, and we have good leadership. And I think it's important that we keep our good administration and continue to work. We're close with the city involved and with the Bloomington Chamber. We have business partners in all our schools and work together. So I do think we have a good district, but we have greater needs all the time and have to work together.
Thank you. Tim?
Of course, the Bloomington schools are on the right track. Tom mentioned the visit we had from the education department head here recently. Our early education programs are state leaders, and as we're addressing achievement gap, that's an extremely important part of having our students ready for school by the time they begin. Tom also mentioned the idea of having some other alternatives in elementary schools. International focus would be one. STEM is kind of a casual thing that we take on, but not in a systematic way as widely as some school districts do. And we can improve opportunities in that way as well. There are other ways that we can improve what it is that we do, but I think the school board is aware of many of them, is working on them, and I don't want to take any more time to talk about it. I look forward to hearing some other views as well.
Rick?
Whether or not we're on the right track, I guess that could take, it depends on what track you're talking about. But as far as fiscal responsibility goes, the school district is doing very well. One of the reasons why I feel strongly about our school and why I feel secure in the school district's future is I've had a chance to work with the Curriculum Advisor Committee and some of the PBS and the music steering committees, and I see how hard and how hard the administrators and the teachers work for our schools and how dedicated they are to making quality education for everybody. That being said, what we need to do is we need to keep assessing what we're doing, determine what we're doing right, and keep doing that. Use the data to figure out what we're doing poorly or where we need, where we have room for growth and fix what needs to be fixed.
Jim?
I believe we're on the right track. About five years ago, our superintendent gathered with some partners, Hennepin County and the city, and tried to develop a consortium or at least a program whereby data could be collected from, from birth to three years old so that we could work with early childhood. From that, they developed the pathways to graduation, which was a framework allowing all the students to learn and maybe be on different tracks in order to graduate. But we have a free clinic at Pond now through some of the partnerships that we've established, and we have other learning opportunities with our early childhood. And our early childhood, as was mentioned earlier, is well-known in the state. We have community education and adult education programs that's first in the state and are always receiving awards because of the wide umbrella that we reach out to in terms of everybody being a learner and wanting to learn.
Dawn?
Yes, I think we're on the right track, but my involvement in the schools also has shown me areas where we needed work. One of those things is from the advisory, one of my advisory councils I sit on, is I learned that we had some significant behavioral issues that were, needed a different way of being addressed, let's say. And I learned about the positive behavior interventions and supports from the Minnesota Department of Education. And I, and I would say Eric Melby, were the two people that brought that to our district, and we now have seven of our 10 elementaries involved in the PBIS and all the middle schools. And most of the principals will say it's been a great change of environment in their schools and has taught us how to address behavior in a much different way. So I think there's always room for improvement. Moving forward, I would agree that we need to always have more opportunities, consider magnet schools, those types of things also. I think we always need to improve. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyle?
Thank you. Yes, I do think that our district is on the right track. Our strength lies in our students and our staff. Our students are willing and eager learners. They are willing to put in the time and the effort required to succeed. Our staff is outstanding. They are professionally driven. They become experts in the field. They are willing to develop strategic plans to help our learners. We have state and national experts on our staff that are sought out by other educational districts. The polls have indicated that the general public thinks that our district is exceptional and that they are happy with the leadership that the administration and the school board is providing. Financially, I think we are on the right track. I think Bloomington is an excellent school district and moving ahead well. Thank you.
Tom?
Yes, I think we're on the right track, which again is why I choose to send my kids to school here in Bloomington. I think that, that we scored a major victory last year, not just in Bloomington, but of all of Minnesota, when, when the legislature passed All Day Kindergarten. And I think when it comes to closing the achievement gap, that's going to make a lot of headway in that. And I think that our next, our next goal, at least from mine, my personal goal, is that we move on to universal preschool. And like All Day Kindergarten, that isn't something that we could probably fund in Bloomington because it'd be way too costly. But there are things that we can do as board members, and one of those is we can reach out to other districts surrounding us to see if they feel the same and see if we can get pressure on to our legislators. And I've already talked to all of the legislators in Bloomington. They know how I feel about, 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 about universal preschool. And I think as a board member, we could also testify at the legislature. And when a testimony is coming from a board member who's also a special ed teacher, who's also an early childhood advocate and a parent of young children, I think that's a pretty compelling testimony. Thank you.
You guys really are good. I just start leaning in to say, "Shut up," and you stop. This concludes our questions. Now each candidate, again, has one minute to offer closing remarks. This time, we'll start with Dawn Stigoff and go this way, ending with Lyle.
Thank you for inviting us this evening. I just wanted to say that people that know me in the Bloomington community know that I show up. They know that I work hard, and they know that I am passionate about public education in this school district. I listen. I will respect others' opinions. I do my homework. When I had a child diagnosed with autism, I didn't know anything about autism, but let me tell you, I know a lot now. I can, I can talk presentations on that subject, and I would do the same thing for school board. I would go to all the trainings that are offered. I would do my homework and become educated in everything that I need to do. I would make informed decisions that are best for our students. Thank you.
Jim?
I wish to thank the League for this forum tonight also. I hope I have been able to portray myself as a positive, experienced, and knowledgeable candidate, ready to step in on day one, to accept responsibility and help provide a smooth transition with the rest of the board to carry out the mission of the district, which is, we are an educational leader developing in all of our learners the ability to thrive in a rapidly changing world. Now, the district has in place, as I mentioned before, pathways to graduation, a comprehensive framework to provide a learning path from birth to graduation for every student, realizing there's more than one academic pathway available to all students and families. Now, electing four members from this group of seven will not be easy because of the commitment by everyone here. And some people even say we need younger people or new voices to be heard. I agree somewhat, but they need to have a supportive, moderate, friendly, and business-experienced veteran like myself who wants to rejoin the team and help them lead them to become a championship district. I ask for your support and vote on November 5th.
Rick?
As you go throughout the city, you'll see a lot of the lawn signs out in people's yards. And if you do a survey of where I have my signs, you'll find them at the homes of liberals, conservatives, progressives, and even some Tea Party members. I think that that is an indication that my message resonates with a wide variety of people in the city. My message of, excuse me, my message of being fiscally responsible, of creating a climate where all students can reach their fullest potential, and being a fresh, new voice on the board. Some people have indicated that they don't like that approach. I've actually had some politicians tell me that if my, if my sign is in a Tea Party or your yard or in a progressive's yard, then they can't support me. Well, I think that's just too bad. Because you know what? That's politics as usual, and I'm not your usual politician. I think that we all live in Bloomington. I think that we all live in Bloomington, we're all in this together, and it's important that we all start working together to come up with solutions for the problems in our district. Thank you.
Tim?
My thanks also to the League of Women Voters for another good forum, good opportunity to communicate with our community. You know, asking people who are involved in education to give one-minute answers to questions is like putting handcuffs on us. Educators like to consider many different options, and I think that's an important role of school board members as well, to have critical thought patterns, that we're able to put together some ideas, consider alternatives, and contribute our best to improving the school district. And you know, elections are great things, and campaigning is a great thing because it forces some contact with community. It forces us as candidates to learn something. And it's an opportunity for community to contact us. I've been getting texts and phone calls, and people have started coming forward to let me know how they feel. Community and parent engagement have become buzzwords in the community. It's among our goals going forward to improve at that, and we've hired staff to do it. This is community engagement. I urge everyone to consider the candidates, read the sun current, and vote.
Stop. Arlene?
Thank you. I have never, ever had lawn signs. Guess I've been around too long, but it's just been a wonderful time. This is our third get-together, and we have two more to go. But we, as you can tell, we don't really disagree on issues. It's just the importance of education, and I just so, would be so glad to give my time, which I have, somebody said, you know, would say, "Oh, you've stayed on the school board for so long for all the money you make." And finally came up with the answer, saying, "If I were doing it for the money, I'd be waitressing." But I love being with the students lots and the teachers and all, everybody, so would be glad to do it again. Thank you.
Tom?
So I want to, I want to thank the League for putting on a great forum, and I just want to say that I've had a really good time doing, throughout this whole process, just running for public office. For those of you that are out there watching, who have thought about running for public office, I would say do it. This has been an amazing experience, just getting to know all the candidates and coming to these forums and the whole thing, and door knocking has been, it's been great. I think we have really good candidates up here, and I think that no matter what happens in the election, our kids are going to be, are going to do real well. And I wish all of you guys luck, and I hope you guys all tie for seconds. I really do. I think that when you're deciding, it's a hard choice narrowing it down to four, and when you're deciding, well, why should I choose Tom Bennett when we have other candidates that have decades of experience? And I think it's because I bring unique qualities that other board members don't have, as a special ed teacher, as a, as an early childhood advocate, and as a parent with children in schools. I think that I could bring unique perspective to the board, and I am asking for your support, and I'm asking for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Lyle?
Okay, thank you. I too would like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for their forum this evening. I do believe that this job as a school board member is important because of the citizens are trusting you with two things that are important to them, and that is their children and their pocketbook, okay? Throughout my 40 years in education, I have held true to the belief that all children can learn. As a school board, we must ensure that our staff has the proper training and that the state-of-the-art equipment to assure that each student has the opportunity to excel. Unlike some of the members of this panel who have been on the board for 20 and 30 years, I am the rookie of the current school board. I bring an excellent background in educational issues, but at the same time, I bring a fresh voice and a, and fresh ideas to board discussions. So again, thank you to the League, and I ask for the support on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank all the candidates for participating tonight and our partners at the City of Bloomington and Bloomington City Information Television. This forum will be reradcast on Channel 14 many times between now and Election Day. Information about broadcast times will be available on the Bloomington League of Women Voters website and the city's website. And pay attention to the referendum, apparently, that's on your ballot too, candidates and referendum. This concludes our forum. Thank you for watching, and don't forget to vote. Thank you. [applause][1775.33][1775.33][music]